I'd like to call the school committee meeting to order. I'd like to start by rising from the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the role of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. A moment of silence? Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. I'd like to start off by introducing our student representative Tiffany Galvin. Thank you for coming in meeting with us. Um, the first item, actually, before we go to the first item, which is approval, I just wanted to say that this is our first meeting where we're transitioning to being paperless as a school committee, and so we are using our Chromebooks with the help of Prin- account- sorry, with the help of Kim. And, Mr. Collins, we have gotten ourselves almost up to speed, so if we stutter a little in our movement through one thing to the next, please give us some time to get, as technologically advanced as our students are here. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the September 12th meeting. Moved 20 seconds?
Check it.
It's been moved a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Our next item is, oh, recognitions. All right. We would like to recognize Ms. Elizabeth Herman. This certificate of recognition is to certify that Elizabeth Herman was formally recognized on October 17th, 2016, by the West Bridgewater Public Schools for a perfect score on the grade 10 ELA MCAS. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations very much.
Nice job Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Geez, these just won't.
I think we all know how hard it is to get, you know, even if you know everything and you're a great student, getting every single question right is so difficult, which is why we have one person here that did that. So it's, um, it really is, it's a great feat, so congratulations.
All right. Personnel.
We have no personnel.
No, I just say we're all perfect.
Just these characters in front of us?
Yeah.
All right, for, uh-
With exception.
Dr. Athletian, take it away with our superintendent's update.
Yes. So we have a number of things this evening for superintendent's update. It was actually a while ago now, but it was after our last school committee meeting, so we didn't really get to talk about it, but we did have the dedication to the Robert M. Dwyer Memorial Field on September 24th, as the Wildcats football team played Nantucket. And, um, the field wasn't yet complete. It still isn't complete. But it was done enough so that we could at least have people there. We brought in some temporary bleachers and had the Dwyer family come for the dedication and had a little dedication ceremony, and many of you were there at 1:00 before the game. And I thought it went really well. Since that time, I did get a thank you card and a personal note from Nancy E. Moore, who was Bobby's wife, and she just said she's so thankful and her sons and cousins, the cousins, her in-laws, were so thankful that we thought of rededicating to Bobby, even though it had been, you know, since, gosh, the early 80s when he worked here, and I think he passed away in 1984. But they were really, really grateful that we kept that honor for him. And I think you could tell from the speeches that day that they, it really meant something to them. A lot of former students that he had came and talked to Nancy and some of the, some of the families, so it was really nice. So we did dedicate the field. We had our first game. Oakland wasn't great, but we, we did have our first game, and since then, we've been playing field hockey and youth football. We have another, the next high school football home game this coming Saturday against Sacred Heart, and I'm hearing it is a big, big game for them for, depending on what happens with home field advantage or things like that down in the playoffs and stuff. So, so it's a big game this weekend. The field, though, people just need to be careful. They need to make sure they come in sneakers and stuff and realize that if they want to sit, they might have to bring a blanket or a lawn chair because we still do not have the bleachers. Mr. Holden and I took a walk out there Friday, and we did talk to the foreman who was out there and said that they were going to be working on the electrical panel this week, which is all the electricity that's going to be going out to the lights on the field, into the concession stand, into the press, what will be eventually the press box and that stuff. Probably two full days of work for that, just to get it hooked up. Then they're going to test the lights and make sure that the connection works and all that stuff. Then they actually have to have an electrical inspection done by the town, and then because the electric, if the electricity passes, then we can have hot water in the plumbing, and once that happens, then the plumbing inspector can come. So we still have a lot of little things to do, and the concession stand and the bathrooms will be done. So, I don't know, what do you think in hopefully two weeks from, with all the, with all the inspections and everything?
I don't foresee there being much more of a delay based on what we were told on Friday and based on being a little bit optimistic with what we're hoping is going to happen this week, especially with the lighting and then the testing of the lighting, the field lighting, that is, so that all the inspections can kind of stop the flow. I don't think we'll get a building inspector to sign off, though, until the slab is poured and it's a safer condition than what we have right now.
Right, and so that part of it, where the slab is going to be poured and the future bleachers and press box are going, that is kind of an unknown. It's, it's on a, we're not, we're hearing two different stories on that, so we're working now to get to the bottom of that and figure out when that slab will actually be poured and then when the bleachers will come. You know, eventually, originally, they said the bleachers would be here by the end of October. Obviously, that's not happening. It's been pushed out. We keep crossing our fingers that they'll be here for Thanksgiving. You know, your guess is as best, as good as ours. We just, we don't have any specific detail on that. We keep trying to push and we'll try to get more this week, but we did go out there and they dug out with the new plans. It's ready to go. They just, we just need to get going. So both sides have to kind of work together, and our OPM and architect will be working with AP Whittaker to get that going. The other thing that needs to be redone is the walkway. I don't know if anyone's been out there, but the walkway in front of the berm now, for some reason, maybe the heavy rains we had a weekend ago, there's sinkholes in part of it. So it's roped off right now with safety stuff so that people don't walk through there, but we need to get that fixed, too. So the company that did that needs to come out and fix their work for that, for that walkway. So, you know, it seems like it's little things, but all the different, they're all from different people, and all the moving parts have to work together, and that's really where we are to try to get done. So I know there's a lot of people out in the community that are frustrated and wondering, when's this going to be done? Why is this taking so long? How come this is happening? When? And you just need to know that our frustration is the same as yours. We are, we are frustrated, too. We are still at least getting to play games out there. It may not be great for spectators right now, but at least the kids are having home practices and they are getting to play on the field. So hopefully, things will turn around and we'll be finished soon. So, that's my field saga.
The field surface is wonderful. The kids have had, athletes have had wonderful things to say about playing on the-
And I did notice, I remember when we first went out and we saw that there was like, the sand was actually on top of the rubber, and we didn't know if that was right or if we needed to use the machine to, and, to sweep it up. And the person from Sprinter said, no, they just have to play on it. If they play on it for 30 days, it's going to take care of it. And I was out there today with Mr. Barrett, and you can see where the major playing surfaces are that it has worked in. So that definitely, it's looking even a lot better than it was, you know, 15 days ago, so.
There are a couple of rumors going around town about the lights have been turned on and that they're too bright. Up until today-
Don't we wish?
The lights have not even been wired, so they can't be turned on. And the other thing was, there is a rumor about the sign, and I believe that the issue with the sign has been resolved as far as how long a certain comment stays on it. And so anything you hear, please just ignore it. And you can just tell them to call Mr. Holden.
I'd be happy to talk to him.
Is your number on that?
Please call Mr. Holden.
Your number here?
Please call.
Call Mr. Holden.
Any questions or concerns for anybody?
Be sure to leave long messages, too.
Long and lengthy.
Details are important.
Until the phone beeps, when you know it's all, you're out of time.
Yeah, well, it's definitely not for lack of effort that we don't have exactly what we thought we'd have at this point, but we will, we will get there, and it will be great. So thank you for all your efforts. Onto, speaking of effort, our district school accountability audit.
Yeah, this is probably the most exciting thing that we're doing this year as a school district. So you, you, I told you before, we're having a, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, by law, has to do district, school and accountability audits for all districts. They do about 20 per year, and we were the lucky lottery winners this year of the district and school accountability audit. The first thing that they asked us to do was a district self-assessment on the different standards, and that was due October 14th. We sent it in a week ago, and that seemed like an audit in itself, but it was just a self-assessment to see what will be audited on. So what will be audited on, what they'll be looking at is the conditions for school effectiveness, leadership and governance, curriculum and instruction, assessment, human resources and professional development, student support, and financial aid, excuse me, financial and asset management. They're only going to pick three of those based on our self-assessment, and they go together in groups. Leadership and governance, human resources and professional development, and financial and asset management go together as a group, and then curriculum instruction, assessment, and student support go together as a group. So based on what we sent in for our self-assessment, they're also going to look at all our information on the DESE website, which is our assessment data and our accountability data and our school indicators, things like that. So all that information's up there. When they look at that, they look at our self-assessment, then they're going to say, we're going to do these three. So I don't really know how they, you know, what their criterion is, but that's what they're going to do. I was told we should know by the end of the month, and then once we, and not only that, by the end of the month, we should also know when the window is for them to come in for the three days. But between now, when we find out, and the three-day visit, we'll be gathering information, kind of doing our own self-study and putting things together. Dr. Hanscom has graciously volunteered to be the liaison for the district audit, and so she will be putting all her stuff, all the things together for us. Well, I'll be working together, but we need one liaison that would work with the people from the DESE.
Yeah, it's going to take a lot of effort, but again, I think some good things will come out of this that we don't even know we, we needed to improve on. Hopefully, that all of our efforts will, will show something fabulous we'll talk about at the end of this.
At the end of the, uh-
Speaking of something fabulous.
We are mobile. That's it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know.
That is fabulous.
I added a slide.
That was good. Oh, good.
It's a nice segue.
So far, we've-
We're mobile now. We actually, this is our first day of our customized West Bridgewater app that you can get from, if you're Android, you can get it on Google Play, and if you're an iPhone, you can get it at the App Store. You just need to go and say, West Bridgewater Public Schools. It should come up. That's what it looks like. And the first thing that people should do when they sign up for it, it is free, when they sign up, is you see in the top left-hand corner, that's the menu bar. They just need, they should go in to the menu bar and go to settings, and then set the notifications, because you may not want notifications from every single school. Like, if you only have kids in the McDonald's school, you might just check off district and McDonald's school. Someone might just do, someone might just do athletics. Whatever you want notifications for, push-out notifications, that's what you would check, check off. But it, what it really does is it takes all of the stuff that we would put out, and all the notifications we would put out on our webpage, and it puts it in mobile form. So people can go in, you pick, go to the right-hand side circle and pick the middle, senior, high school, then go to the menu and see what the lunch menu is for the next week. Go to the right-hand side and pick athletics, then go into the athletics part of the app. You can get the schedule, and then double-click and get directions to wherever the games are and stuff. You can get a lot, principals will be doing live feeds, so anything that they're going to be putting out on Facebook and Twitter, they'll put on this, and it'll just go out, and you can look at everything that's going on, notifications. So it's brand-new for us, but I think it's just so many people are now going to Facebook to see things, going to Twitter to see things, and then they have to go into our website. This is something that they can, they can actually go to our Facebook and Twitter pages through this, too. So you can, it's one place that everyone can go to the different things. So bear with us, because we're just learning, too, but it, I think, is going to be really powerful, and what we were looking for is one-stop shopping for people.
So you can use it from an administrative perspective to go to one place to send it to all those places.
Yes, and that's, that's great, because we were, oh, we put this on the website, and then put it on Facebook, and then put it on Twitter, send a schoolway, push out because bus five is late, da-da-da, something like that, whereas now they can go in and say, da-da-da, and then they pick Facebook, Twitter, live feed notification goes out in one place. So it's very good for that. But it's, you know, so from both ends, it's good. It's just people are going to have to play with a little to learn how to navigate it, but once you, but it's like any app, you just, you know, but mainly, it's just two things, is where the schools are on the right, and every school or every page has a menu page with all the things that you want for the menu page.
If you just show all of our kids during the day how to use it, then they can show us in the-
Yeah, they probably, we probably won't even have to show them. They'd just be able to go, da-da-da, and then do it.
Exactly, yeah, so there'll be a great resource for it.
But we've been playing with it, and it's pretty easy to navigate, once you understand that the schools are on one side and the menu on the other. And we, it took us a while, but we finally got the push-out notifications working. Those are some interesting texts that we had back in college when we were trying to get it done. So, but we're mobile. So, well, I put it on Facebook today, so people will, we're going to keep using the push-outs for schoolway for the elementary parents, for the buses, for like another month so that we can get parents up and running, because we don't want to not, you know, if they don't have that and think it's the same thing, but we're going to start really trying to advertise this and getting this going. And so we're going to be using it a lot, and I noticed some people even put things out today, so as much as possible so that we can, because as more and more people download it, we want to make sure it's still working, so we want to send things out. So we might run into a glitch or two, but I think, I think it's good for the system to have everything in one place. And most people, when you're out and about, you're on this, you're not, you don't have your laptop with you or your computer, so. That's that.
I like the logo, too.
I love the logo.
Yeah, that was very nice of you.
All right, park scores. As you know, we took grades three through eight, the park test last year for the second year in a row, second in last year. We took park tests, and you know that the state is pulling away. We're still going to be in the park consortium, but we're pulling away with the testing, and Massachusetts is coming up with their own test, which is the Next Generation MCAS. It's going to be park-like, and it's going to be online, but it will be just for our state instead of sharing it with several states, like what Park was doing. So we took the test grades three through eight in math in ELA. MCAS was still for science and for high school, and I want to show you the results. One thing about Park, and I went over this last year, is they don't, they don't supply as much information as MCAS did. They don't give us the item analysis. They don't tell us specifically on each strand how kids do. They don't give us all the questions and line them up so that we can see, oh, we got this percentage right, we got that percentage right. We really only get the overall scores and then how some of the subgroups did, like the high-needs students, the students with disabilities, the English language learners, the economically disadvantaged, those type of things. We get things like that. So you don't get a lot out of it that you can actually, you have to do a lot of manipulating to get as much data as possible to see how we can improve. So it's a lot more work on our part, because we don't get all the things that we had, and so it was easier with MCAS. We're being told that with the new MCAS, MCAS 2.0, that we will get that information again, which will be much more helpful. So we are working on things, because you can, you can, you can pick up some trends, so we are working on things. We find areas that maybe we need to do a little more work on, and we can do that, but again, we don't have a lot, so we used to do a real lengthy, you know, lengthy talk about MCAS, and we just don't need to do that. So I'm just going to go give you an overview. And now, that just looks like a lot of numbers, and you're like, okay, what the heck does that mean, because it's just like a bunch of numbers, but let me just go through the, one, one thing I want you to notice is, I, the numbers are black and maroon. Maroon means that West Bridgewater either improved over last year or did better than the state from last year or anything like that. So if you look at the whole picture, the maroon is good. So I thought that, because what I think, we obviously, in the next couple of years, would love to have every single number be maroon. So that's going to be our goal. Go maroon. So the first column, oh, level four and five, you can see, Park has five levels, MCAS had four levels. Level four and five means you either met or exceeded expectations. I didn't give you approaching expectations or didn't meet expectations, because our goal is we want as many people in four and five as possible, and this is how they were measuring us for accountability, so that's why I just gave you this as an overview. The first column is the subject, the second is how our district did, and what that is, is the percentage of students in levels four and five. Okay? So you can see, anywhere that it's maroon, we had a higher percentage of kids at that grade level and subject, higher than last year. Okay, so, grade three math, 80% of the kids were in level four and five. That was higher than last year, so I made it maroon. So you can see that there was an increase in some areas, and there was either stay the same or a decrease in some areas. The next column, all park districts, this is, not every district took park. Remember, some opted to still take MCAS. But if you took all of the districts, including us, that took park, and averaged out their percentage of level four and five, that's what that first column is. The plus or minus is how we did better than them or lower than them. So you can see that we have a lot of maroon there, so we're either on, you know, on target or higher than the state. One thing I want to draw your attention to is grade eight math. You see that I have two asterisks there, and I have, because if you look at that on the surface, and I don't give you background, you're going to say, oh my God, what happened to the, the eighth grade math? Why is that so low? How come they're so below the state? Because you have to understand, it's, that's a tough piece of data to look at, because in eighth grade in West Bridgewater, we test all the kids whether or not they're ready for algebra, like a full-fledged Algebra I class. And we usually get between 20 and 25 kids out of the eighth grade class that will take Algebra I, and they take it with, they take freshman Algebra I with ninth graders. So the rest of the kids take eighth grade math. The Park test has an eighth grade math test, and they have an Algebra I test. So our kids that are taking Algebra I with those ninth graders take the Algebra I test. The rest of the class takes the grade eight test. So the top 20% of your class is taking it, was taken out of that, because they're taking a higher-level test. So the next thing you'd say is, well, yeah, but doesn't that happen at every school? No, it doesn't. There are more schools than not that don't separate out, separate out the algebra kids, and they all take the eighth grade test. Or there's some schools that the kids take Algebra, they still had them take the eighth grade test. So the overall eighth grade scores have a lot of people there. Ours, we, we lost the top 25%. Does that make sense? So if we had taken the, maybe if we took the 25% of the 20% of those kids that took Algebra I and put them in the test, if they're the higher testing kids, then that would make it go out. So that's important, because, you know, we have one eighth grade math teacher, and it doesn't, it's not like, why are the math skills, it's, there's a reason for it. So I need, did I make sense the way I explained that?
Yes.
So, um-
And that happened last year as well.
Yeah, it did happen last year as well, but it's, it's important to look at it, because, and it doesn't mean we don't want to get better, because we obviously do, because we want all, we want as many kids as possible get to level four and five, but you just need to understand that you can't compare that to everyone else's scores.
So is our accountability, then, taking that explanation into consideration with the state?
No.
Oh, so should we look at it a different way, then?
Well, I don't know yet, because we have not been told if MCAS 2.0 or Next Generation MCAS is going to make everyone take eighth grade math, or are they going to allow the Algebra I? So I'm not sure of that. It's a good discussion to have, but you have to look at it and say, so if that was the case, and we have kids taking a full-fledged ninth grade Algebra I class, what would be our reasoning for making them not take an Algebra I end-of-the-year course test and making them take the eighth grade test? Just so for our accountability? But is that good for the kid? I don't know, it's-
If you, and I know you're going to get to it, but if you jump to the next column over with the growth, the growth would indicate, since it went up from the year before, that that takes the individual students into account-
Yes.
So that even though we're showing negative-
Right, and that- Right, and that's the thing, the growth was up.
They actually all did go up.
Right, and, and a lot of that growth is in like a high needs population, too, which is a good thing. And then you can see the total, three through eight, three through eight. So the last column is the growth. Remember that typical growth, we want to be between forty and sixty? So we want to get growth up in some areas, but if it's maroon, then that means the growth went up from the prior year. So that means, that, that's a good thing. You know, we're going in the right direction. And then there's some that we have to focus in on. And we've already looked at the areas that we really, really need to focus on. And the good news is, in those specific areas, we sat with teachers, administrators, and it was like, oh, it's probably this, it could be this, let's fix this. So it's good, when you, when you see things like that, then it's good, because you know you can, can work on it. And again, we're going into another test next year. So we want, but I, if you look at it, though, it's more maroon than black, so I think that's a good thing.
We're doing well.
Yes.
Good job.
We're still held harmless.
That's right.
So I just want to, just so we're all on the same page here. I think. Except my thing's not working. Oh, talking points, oh, here. So we had slight increases in both achievement and growth overall in grades three through eight. We scored higher than the average of other Park districts overall. And in nine of twelve grade level assessments, we scored higher. This is interesting, because this is important. No West Bridgewater achievement implementation dip in elementary math using Envisions 2.0. Everyone that went to Envisions, that we talked to before we went to Envisions last year, said, just be ready, you're going to have an implementation dip, because our scores tanked when we went, and then we had to build back up. And we, we improved in every grade level, three through six, from the previous year, and we didn't have a dip in Envisions 2.0. So that shows a couple of things. Shows me that we have super teachers, and that kids take math seriously, and that maybe this program is helping us with the teaching of the mathematical practice and stuff. So, and it was only the first year, so. And I know how uncomfortable people were starting with that program, because it was different. And to have some frustration and anxiety with a program, and still improve a little, is, I think, says a lot. That's why I wanted to make sure that that, that point got shown. Another interesting point, the state did surveys, looked at data from different years, and found that paper pencil testing, both in math and ELA, but a little more in ELA, was higher across the board than people that took it online. And the way they, they looked at it, too, is there were some schools that did Park online, and then the second year said, forget this, we're going back to paper pencil, and they got the highest, they shot up. So what's it, show you, it shows you that learning how to take the test on a computer is part of taking the test. They may know the content, but we have to make sure they're comfortable with what they're taking the test with. One of the things we found at the elementary last year, and even more this year, and Envisions math helped that with the math, math, math program, that where we were one-to-one at the elementary schools, all their tests are online. So they're doing that. And then now, we're getting more with the writing online with the ELA. So, but one thing we weren't doing is seventh and eighth grade math, they weren't taking the test online. You can see the, the difference. So we're looking into finding a way to do that with the program that we have. We might have to kind of combine two programs, but the department head's looking into that now, because they need to get their practice. It's like, you know, learning to drive a car, and practicing and practicing with an automatic, and then going for your test, and they go, okay, but you have to do this with a stick shift. Oh, well, I know how to drive, but I might just not be really good at it, but I'll, I'll get, you know? And so we have to, we have to do that stuff. And it's not, you know, people say, oh, wow, you're, you're looking at Park, you're looking at MCAS, and the computers, it's teaching to the test. No. We're teaching the standards of content, and then we're assessing them on it. So we're teaching the things that kids are going to be assessed on. Teaching how, but, but getting them comfortable in the medium with that, you know, the tools they use is part of it, makes sense. So we just have to practice it. You know, again, going back to the driving. You wouldn't sit with a kid in your car and drive and say, okay, and then you put the gas on and show them, and then, and then say, okay, now go take your test, I showed you how to drive. They need to practice. So, and everyone's okay with that, so they need to, need to be okay with this. So, but we're not, we've made the decision not to go back to paper pencil, even though you can for a couple of years in all grades but four and eight, because eventually, by 2017, everyone's going to be online. We already made that move, we might as well continue the practice with them. So the areas that we're targeting, we had long talks with middle school mathematics, and it was really the teachers came up with that. We have aligned to the frameworks, but we just don't have enough rigor in the program that we're using. And rigor meaning the tough problems, the, you know, five-hundred-part problems, the word problems. And so we're looking at ways to increase the rigor through problem-based learning, not project-based learning, but problem-based learning, and doing more kind of flipped classroom type things, where you're doing the problems within the class. So we, that was identified. And I talked to a number of other curriculum people and assistant superintendents from other districts, that said they found the same problem with the program we're using that they have, too. So we're kind of working together. In grade six, seven, eight, high needs and special education, we need to do better or more targeted interventions through student success plans. We need to individualize more, and actually come up with more targeted, individualized student success plans. We have plans for that in place, that we're working on. And because it was much more, especially in grade six, the high needs population that had the low growth, not really the rest of the class. In elementary ELA, they tagged written expression and response to literature. And really, they do, they might be doing it in different ways, starting in first, second, third, all the way up, but really just different forms of writing, more writing. You know, more journal writing, making sure they're writing, using the computer writing, and more responses in literature. So, and more writing across the curriculum, so not just in the ELA classes. And elementary math, more modeling with word problems, and that's really project, problem-based learning. It's the same thing, it's just modeling, how do you go about doing this, versus just being able to rote answer something with a, with an equation? Because those are the mathematical practices, and that's what they're being assessed in. In the old days, they just assessed them on content. Can you memorize this? Can you answer these questions? This is, there were mathematical, like, how do you analyze things? How do you solve problems? How do you reason through a math problem? Those things carry just as much weight as content. So kids need to know how, you, you need to teach kids that way, in order for them to be able to do it on an assessment and show what they know. And lastly, we're just preparing for the Next Generation MCAS in spring of 2017. And so I don't really know what the presentation will be next fall for you, but I have confidence, you know, we don't really know the exact assessment or test, but I have confidence that it will be more Park-like than MCAS-like, and that we are preparing our kids, because we are teaching our kids the state frameworks and the practices that are in the state frameworks. So. I don't know if anyone else has any comments. We, we all met with the, with the teachers and stuff, but...
Can I just make one comment about the computer, practicing the, taking the tests on the computer? So it's to get them ready for the assessment, but also, if you think about college, every class in college has an online component now, so there's the Blackboard platform. There's all of the ways that you're being assessed, college readiness skills that we need to give our kids. So I just wanted to clarify that it's not even just for Park. It's my whole doctorate was online, like, all of it. So you can get a whole degree, but never going into a classroom. If you don't have a navigate and write effectively on that type of a tool, then we're not preparing pretty well.
Yeah, and I, again, I could be wrong, because I thought they'd stay with Park, and they didn't, and they're going to MCAS 2.0. I can't imagine that they're going to say in two years, you know what, we changed our mind, we're going completely back to paper pencil, and you're not going to, I mean, you know, the nurses' boards are online, you take your permit online, I mean, there's computerized testing. So why would the state of Massachusetts in education, which is the top education in the country, go backwards? That makes no sense to me. So if I'm wrong, well, we'll do that much better when we go back to paper pencils. But. Any questions?
No.
So I think, you know, I, it's been a lot of change for teachers, grades three through eight, with, with the pressures of Park, and now we're changing again, and how we're going to teach, and how we're going to do that, and you've got to get kids used to working on the computer, and going to one-to-one, and all the way through up to grade 12. And you have a new evaluation system, and you have to do it this way. And all the high school folks came over to a new building, and all this new tech job. I mean, there's been a lot of stuff.
We should probably be audited.
Yeah, a lot of stuff going on. And I have to give kudos to the teachers, because I know how I feel with all these mandates coming down, and they're the ones in the classroom that also have, you know, all these kids in front of them, and they're still doing all the stuff, like correcting papers, and making sure that they're there for the kids, and trying to do, be their advisor, advisees, and do all the different things that they're supposed to personalize with kids, and they have to do all this stuff. And every year, they just, they step up to the plate. So it's been a lot, but I think, I think we're really lucky in West Bridgewater, because we have a really good group, pre-K through 12.
I do, so.
Now Mark gets to talk.
Ruined my French. It's a very exciting day today.
Can you speak French?
Oui oui.
We had six...
Not Pauli-Français?
No. I did last year, we had a French exchange through at our house, but it went rather poorly. Switched over real quick. Six students and one teacher from Lyon, France, came today. They joined fifteen classmates and a couple of teachers who are down in Falmouth, that's the overall exchange program. Awesome kids, awesome West Bridgewater kids, who are going to be their sisters for the week. We took them on a tour this morning of the school, they were very impressed. The teacher said that their school in France was built, I think, in the sixteen hundreds, nineteen hundreds. So quite different. And Lyon is a city of about six hundred thousand, so I said, we're just a little bit smaller. They're very excited, they're going down to the Outer Cape tomorrow as a group. They're going to take a tour of West Bridgewater with Mr. Donopoulos, I think, Wednesday.
Also doing Wednesday, we have to check on PSATs, and they may bump it, but stay tuned.
That'll be a great tour for them. And then they're going to Boston on Thursday. They did spend Thursday through yesterday in New York City. I told them Boston's even better, so let's go with that. And they leave, I think, next Tuesday. But it's, it's awesome, it's great to see the kids. I told them that they will not only educate and light up the lives of the six kids here, but our whole school community. So it's, it's quite fun to see them, and they're very excited. And the one thing they absolutely all want to do is shop in the Wildcat Den. They all want to go shopping, so they keep asking, when are you going to open it? When are you going to open it? So we have more stuff coming on Thursday, so they're very, very excited, so. Thank you for the opportunity to be able, you know, have these students and teachers come in to enrich our program.
Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Excellent. So under business, our first order of business is for the MASC, MAS official delegate forum. So the annual meeting is coming up in November. And we have two school committee members that are going to attend, Mrs. Donahue and Mrs. Susan Sullivan. And so we need to vote on one person to be our official delegate, because there is a, some voting issues that they'll represent us for. And I hear that there is a, a motion to, to elect, to appoint, I'm sorry. Would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion through Donna's gracious volunteering to be the delegate, although I will be right next to you, to have Donna Hume be the delegate for this MASC, MAS official conference in November.
Second.
All right, we moved to second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you both for going and representing us.
Is that thing, I'm sorry, Molly, is that meeting at the tavern this week?
Yes, it's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow night?
Yes.
Okay.
You going to be there, Jim?
Yeah, if my schedule allows me, I'm going to try and make it.
Awesome.
I'll see what happens.
Yeah, so our district is having a meeting right here in town, so you know what it sounds like, because that might not have come out over sounding exactly proper. But it's being hosted at the Boston Tavern in West Bridgewater, and it's District Three is getting together, and there'll be representatives there to talk about the different questions that are coming on the ballot, and give you an opportunity to ask questions and give information, so that we're better prepared for the meeting in November. So it's something great. They did it at the Charlie Horse last year, and it was well-attended, I know. Mrs. Sullivan attended it, it was very helpful. And that will be why some of our members will be at the tavern tomorrow.
All right, excellent. A field trip, Mr. Vodwell and Mr.?
Thank you, Mrs. Vodwell. How's everyone doing? Madam Chair, School Committee, Dr. Oakley, guests and our guests at home. I'm here to request, every other year, we take a field trip with our sophomores and our juniors to DC. This year, we're hoping to leave on Wednesday, because it's a Good Friday year. So we're hoping to leave on Wednesday on April 12th, and return Saturday night on the 15th. They'll be home in time if they celebrate Easter Mass. We're very excited about this trip. It is one of the best education trips, I think, going. We visit all the monuments, we, we take in the Mount Vernon, we go to the Smithsonian, the American Museum, Alexander Ghost Tour, the students thrive on, on a trip like this. We're going to go down with two, two coaches. It's just a lot of fun. The History Department looks forward to it every year, we're the chaperones, I'm the lead chaperone, and several of my department members join us to, to travel down. So it's, it's our goal, it's, it's to provide this safe opportunity for our kids that's very educational, and at the same time, we think it's very memorable and also affordable. There was some mention and talk about flying down, but when we did some of the comparative analysis and some of the discussions, there are pros and cons, but the price goes up when you fly down. And so we, we want to make sure that we were able to have those kids, those sophomores and juniors that want to go and can afford to go, to still go. And it was pretty much unanimous within the department that we're all in agreement, that we want to make sure that we keep it affordable, so. I mean, we're not going to, we're tabling it for this year, but we'll keep it on our radar for, for the future, for sure. But a lot of fun, and we're hoping that you guys will approve our trip again, once again.
Just a quick question, are you going, are you planning on having any fundraising or anything by way of trying to help the students?
We, we don't, we don't fundraise, we have not needed to in the past. And I think a lot, the big reason that we have not is because it is so affordable. I mean, a, a four-day trip, that's just a little over $500, is outstanding. I know that the Disney trip does something similar. We, we, we work hand-in-hand with them a little bit, and we urge those kids to take advantage of it. In the past, when there were some situations, we do address it through the school and through associations that are in town, to try to help those kids that need a little boost and a little help. So we're always mindful of that, and we always do, again, affordability, safety, memorable, a fun, safe trip, but one that's accessible by all of our students is, is the big push.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the field trip to Washington DC as presented through the Middle, Senior, High School History Department.
Second.
It's been moved in second. I will ask, Tiffany, it looks like you are in agreement that this is an excellent trip, that there are wonderful things from you.
Yeah, I went, when I was sophomore, I think, because I was, yeah, and it was a ton of fun, like... Like, it was like the bus, like you talk about flying, like even the bus ride down was just fun.
The journey.
With all your friends, like even those close quarters, you kind of like choose where you sit through the entire trip and see like, I sat with people I don't usually sit with, so like I talked to them more when I came back. I was closer with the people I wasn't close with before. And it was really cool to see, like the Ghost Tour of Alexandra, coolest thing I ever experienced. Lots of fun. Like the Holocaust Museum was like something that people need to see. And it was incredible to go see that. And to go with like my teachers and stuff could educate me more while I was there, like I wouldn't have the opportunity to go to this, like with my family, if this wasn't available.
Great.
Yeah, I will attest to that as well. Everything she said is spot on. And our kids do interact with us a lot, and they act with the tour guide. Suburban tours provides us with a specialist so that they can ask questions of them. So we get the really good professional touch and a lot for the money on a trip like this. Great experience for the kids.
Excellent. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I, sorry, we were always probably going to vote for, but it's so great to hear wonderful things. I made you talk a little more about it.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. All right, we have another field trip presentation from the middle, senior, high school music and drama department, Diana.
Good evening, Mrs. Diamond. And I came to ask for permission to put together a field trip to New York City on a Saturday, a one-day trip. We would go down by coach bus, Blooms and Taunton, and they would be there for us, and they would take us home as well, the same bus that we went down on. Mrs. Brogna, myself, Mr. Lemarié, possibly his wife, if he can talk her into it, Mrs. Bissari and a couple of other chaperones are all willing to go. We'd like to have the kids see a Broadway show. We possibly, if we have enough kids, we're hoping for 50, we could have 25 go to one show and 25 go to another. And then the other opportunity that we have when we're there is for them to take a workshop with a Broadway professional. And again, 25 for each workshop. One of the workshops that the kids have requested that I've talked to about it is kids that aren't really musical or into a lot of performing themselves have asked to take the stage makeup workshop of how to do that. So I think that there's something in it for everyone, and that is very, very affordable too. That only adds $25 to their ticket. And we can get tickets to the show for $50 with a letter from Mr. Bodwell that we are a school. And we anticipate that the total cost for the students will be around $135. And we're going to open it up to all of the band, the chorus, the theater students and the drama department and see if they'd like to go. So we'd like your permission to plan that. I was thinking a Saturday in December or January, but I couldn't really come up with a date until I had your permission and then go see what we can get for tickets.
It would be seven through 12, so the middle school?
Yes.
Can I make a comment?
Oh, please.
A few years ago, when Miss Beaver was teaching here at the high school instead of other schools, she was my power block advisor. And they did a field trip to New York City. It was like during the school day, though, and they opened it up to people outside the department, and I'm not in one. So we actually went to go to New York City for a day, and we saw a Broadway show, too. Absolutely fantastic. I had so much fun in the city because I love New York City, and I hadn't been there since I was little. And it was good because like we got in there, we got to walk around a little bit to see the city, and we got in to see a show, I think it was Cinderella we saw. It was so nice to see because like I do dance, so like seeing them on stage is incredible.
That's great.
I think it's really cool to have like workshops to go see what the people are probably like, that would be awesome.
One of the workshops, Mrs. Brogna and I, I'm going to let her pick the other workshop because we felt that there would be a performance workshop that they would do. And if the workshop is just our kids, as long as we have 25 of them for the class, it's just our kids. We don't share the workshop with anyone else.
That's nice.
That's really nice.
And they take place in rehearsal studio on the west side.
Excellent. And is food included? Not that I'm worried about food.
No, food is not included. They'll have to bring a little bit to eat with.
Okay, so that once you have like a date and things, that will be figured out. All right, are there any other questions?
If you don't have enough kids, would you?
Refund their money?
Or I didn't know if you'd open it up to others?
Oh, absolutely. But I, from the little that I've heard, I think we'll have a lot, I hope. They seemed very enthusiastic about the idea.
Great. All right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the music and drama field trip to New York City.
Second.
It's been approved, second. Any further comments or questions?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Got a lot of good stuff going on.
I want to go.
All right, policies.
I do first.
I know, if they open up chaperones outside of the music department, are you?
Outside the music department, I want to go.
Right, there you go.
He's doing projects, trying to figure out a way around.
Why wasn't music class here? Something called take that.
Oh, there you go.
So our first policy that's for approval is policy 5580 for the student and staff, and it's the internet use. So there was a bunch of changes. Dr. Hanscom helped me with this one along with Mr. Collins, along with the principals. If you remember last spring, he sent me feedback on this. And we are ready to present it here, so I hope you've all had an opportunity to take a look at it. And basically cleaning up language to encompass all of the different technology that has come into play. We do review this every year, so it's amazing to see even after a year that there's tweaks that need to be made. We also added some language that was required by the state regarding software and applications that the students are using and permission that is needed in the agreements that the students sign at the beginning of the year. Any questions about the changes? The only comment I would make is that even though we are approving this, or we're looking or hopefully approving this tonight in October, that I still want to keep it on course to open again in the spring. And because of so many different things and how quickly this is moving, that in the spring, Mr. Collins and Dr. Hanscom talked about putting together a group of people that can look at this again and really make sure that we have everything we want in there. So. Excellent. There are two policies. Does anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'd love to make a motion. Sorry, Mrs. Smith, to approve the student and staff internet use policy as presented by Mrs. Smith.
Second.
Excellent. Any comments or questions regarding this wonderful policy?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yay, it's passed. We'll see you again in a couple months, policies. It shouldn't be that difficult. Okay, so our next policy, Mr. Holden, policy 3600 for students and staff, weapons, drug and alcohol.
Okay. The policy 3600S, which is the student policy, we added the word opiates in one section, and I don't know if you folks have reviewed it or not, but in section four, paragraph three, we had to add that word to cover the definition of all the different drugs because of its latest use and abuse, more so than use. And we also added a complete phrase under the athletics explaining in great length, and all this was done through coordination with Dr. Oakley, in great length explaining even more so the use of all these different drugs and the issues with tobacco and alcohol. Everything is in red, and the only thing we did on the teacher's policy was add the word opiates in the same section. We felt that the teachers are all wise enough and smart enough to understand that the rest of it's pretty much automatic. So stating that, do you have anything you'd like to add because I know that?
No, basically what we added is based on the new opiate bill that came out over the summer that we had to add. So a bunch of us, actually through North River Collaborative, shared policies and took the information mostly from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and cut and paste it and put it in. And then once this is approved, by the end of this month, we just have to send it in to the state.
I was just going to ask, just through the North River meeting today, we just approved the policy, so this has been blended into this policy that those state mandates and that required language?
Yeah, and that's what we did. Yep.
All right, great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
So based on that, I would like to ask you folks to approve this policy, both policies, I'm sorry, 3600 and 3600S. And I'm not sure if this should be reviewed again in another year. I don't recall.
I think this is a yearly one.
I think it's an annual.
Okay, this is a yearly one, so we're just going to have to look at it again next year.
Excellent.
We've moved. Did you make a?
Yeah, I made the motion.
Excellent, second. So it's been moved to second. Any comments or questions?
No.
I'll just make the one comment, the information that was added in here, it's interesting to see that. I know it was state mandated, but there were things that we were already doing, and it's nice to see that, that, you know, it's not like we updated the policy with a mandate and now we need to do something differently.
Yeah.
We were doing it already, and now the policy has caught up with us, which is great. So thank you to the district for being on top of that. All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All right, policy 8303, student discipline, Mrs. Sullivan.
Yes, I wish I could keep this streak alive with, you know, three and done. I'm sorry. Yeah, I know.
That was pretty good. We got a lot done tonight.
Not only did I forget my Chromebook, and thank you, Mrs. Hume.
No, there we go. We must have just, we'll stop this conversation right here.
I'm so sorry. This one looks like a good one for November.
Excellent, thank you, Mrs. Smith.
I feel your pain.
Yes.
It's all about the love suit.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, warrants. We don't have any warrants?
Nope, no warrants.
Excellent, okay, great. Oh, we are at our public forum. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public forum. I'm not seeing any takers for the public forum, so we're going to move right on to our upcoming events. So within the district, on October 26th, we have a half-day for pre-K through grade 12. It's in-service, there's no afternoon pre-K or kindergarten session. On November 11th, we're celebrating Veterans Day, and there's no school. And the middle, senior high school on October 17th, a welcome event for the French exchange students. On October 19th, Flamenco Fiesta at 6:00 PM.
Flamenco and tapas from 6 to 8. The food is from 6 to 7, and then the show is 7 to 8.
Yep. I'm on that Spanish society, so yeah.
Excellent. We'll be there.
Take it to the old.
It's everything.
$10 for adults, $10 for students, $15 for adults, $30 if they only count.
All right, that's excellent. Oh, great.
Awesome.
Okay, October 24th, the Halloween Bag fundraiser, which I don't know what that is. What's the Halloween Bag fundraiser?
Honored, National Honor Society, that's, yeah.
Okay.
They're bringing in candy and selling them at Power Box, etc.
Oh, excellent. October 25th, the school council meeting at 3 o'clock. I think I said October, I'm sorry, October 25th, the school council meeting at 3 o'clock. Okay, October 26th, the financial aid night at 6:00 PM. On October 30th, the scholarship road race at 10:00 AM. On November 13th, the Lions Club Fair at the Howard School. Would you like to read Howard's?
I'll read it.
Yep, thank you.
On October 20th, the grade five field trip to Sturbridge Village. On October 21st, the Museum of Science presents wind, weather, water and temperature for grade four. On November 2nd, there is a staff meeting at 2:45. And November 8th is the Native American Perspectives Program for grade five.
Excellent.
Please. I'd love to.
Okay, thank you.
And over at the Rozelle McDonald, October 24th, the School Improvement Council at 3:30 PM in the reading room. October 27th, they are celebrating their October birthdays with the principal. On October 28th, grade two is going to Moose Hill for their field trip. And October 31st, grade three is visiting Plymouth Plantation for their field trip. And then on November 5th is the PTO vendor fair from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
At the Spring Street School, we have October 24th for the kindergarten field trip to Woodsberry Farm in Sharon. On October 26th, 27th and 28th, pre-K and K Halloween parades. I'm assuming they're going to walk through your office, Dr. Oakley?
Yep.
You better have candy.
I know.
A lot of it.
Might have to change that.
October 27th, I believe, we'll have council meeting, 2:45. I also have October 27th, Spring Street School, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. And then November 8th, Spring Street School will be closed for the presidential elections.
Oh, no, Spring Street.
They're the only one.
Which should be, which is the only school that'll be closed.
Right. So excellent. It's nice to see on, my kids still talk about their birthday celebrations with Mrs. Dubin when they were over there, so I'm so happy to see that that tradition is still going. No more chicken. Well, I don't, I'm sure you have your own flair on it, but yes, the chicken still gets talked about.
Speaking of Mrs. Dubin.
Oh, yeah, can we give a shout?
We need to give a shout out to Mrs. Dubin because she claimed when we saw her this evening that she actually still watches a school committee meeting.
She told you that, too.
Really? Hello, Mrs. Dubin.
Hello, Mrs. Dubin.
I miss you. I hope we're still up to the right standards.
Oh.
Yeah.
All my things.
Yeah. I would like to say, when I'm going throughout town, you know, many people do watch, and I appreciate that you guys do watch, even though we don't have a large audience here. But it's great to know that people in the community care, and they really do. So thank you, everyone who's watching at home. All right, so our next meeting is on Monday, November 14th at 6:30 PM, right here in the middle, senior high school learning commons. And I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Kim.
Excellent.
I'm fulfilled.